Okay.
So, yeah. We have, it's eleven o'clock, so we are in order for our work sessions that's in preparation for our meeting October the twenty first, which is going to be our recess meeting. And so as a part of that, we try to have presentations of things that are important and significant around the city, things that matter to our constituency. And in this case, we have Brandy Harrington, who is the head of Starkville Strong, which has become quite active in the community for underserved folks and for our, some of our, those who are in need, I'll put it that way. So, and she's been very helpful in assisting some of those folks. So, I thought it would be appropriate for us to hear from her and what they're doing for the community. So, Ms. Harrington, the floor is yours, and I believe she has right there, she has a program for us.
Thank you. I am so grateful for the opportunity to come and share what we do because essentially the community owns Starkville Strong. I only have ten of these, but you can talk about it. It's just some data.
Here you go.
So, Facebook is this connection spot, and at the beginning of the pandemic, we had a Facebook group that got started by Jimmy Redd, and it grew really fast, and he couldn't deal with it, running a Facebook group is not easy, and he passed it to me. He used to be a teacher, and so I missed being able to help the whole person, and we changed the mission to what it is today. And so we have four main pillars: food, housing, advocacy, and support. And we focus on food insecurity, housing instability, homelessness, and we advocate
Let me interrupt you just a minute. In order for people to be able to hear you, you may need to be kind of stationary so that folks can hear you.
I got it. This is the teacher.
I understand.
So, we do these through comprehensive case management, collaboration, we have lots of partnerships, and connection through our innovative programs. So, we have core values here, and we don't like to use cliche language, so these are what we live by. We see you means that we see the person standing in front of us, whether that's a community member or a neighbor in need. We believe in partnerships and collaboration, so we're better together; lead with sincerity; stay the path; and outside the box. So, if you leave here and you don't remember anything else I say, these are the three things that we do: we connect, we empower, and we support. And so this is how we're different. We don't give out a bag of food and then wait on someone to come back and need more later. We promote self-reliance and independence. We promote fiscal responsibility, accountability through incentives and rewards, focus on those accountability strategies, and end up reducing strain on public resources because of that. Our funding looks like this. We're community-funded, about eighty-five percent, and that means essentially the community invests in us, and they essentially own Starkville Strong. We have about ten percent that comes from grants, we're working on that, and business donations right now are at five percent. And so this is the persona of the dean of students, and he makes eighty-nine thousand dollars a year, which is lowballing it, and his rent is eighteen hundred. This is to help you understand a little bit about how someone can end up in need. And utilities are two forty-five. This is a mom, and she's working two minimum wage jobs. She's making twenty-nine thousand dollars a year, and her rent's nine hundred utilities are about the same. And so how is she feeling? How is she making it through? She's working two jobs, and at the end of the day, she's still struggling to make ends meet. And so a lot of organizations tell our clients to get a job, get a second job, get a side hustle, and then tensions rise, stress increases, and anger starts to form, and where does that anger go? If you don't treat the whole person and you deal with everything that they might be dealing with besides just that immediate need, then where does that anger go? These are our main programs. The Connect, Empower, and Support comes through Path to Stability, which is a curriculum that we wrote, so six-month class, meets once a week to lead our participants through, coursework to help them become stability, stabilize, and then thrive beyond that. Path to Prosperity is just case management approach, it's a comprehensive approach. Neighbors Helping Neighbors is a food giveaway event that we do, Second Servings, Educational Outreach, and then our seven free little pantries. Our educational outreach, we do poverty simulations in the community. We've been to the school district, we've done some on campus. The Housing Hustle Board game is something that we created in order to share how someone can end up in housing instability and struggling to get through that cycle. And our homeless experience is similar. It shows the variables, the obstacles, and the struggles of once you're homeless, trying to get housed after that. This is our fastest-growing program, and it's one that we're the most proud of. Second Servings is our food rescue, and we started with one sorority in two thousand and twenty-four, and that sorority was Chi Omega. And then about a month, we did fifteen hundred meals from that one sorority. So, we go get the food, good cooked food that's going in the trash, and then we're able to look at what we have, lay it out, it comes usually in these big bags, and we make it into meals to distribute. We make too many, there are too many. We now have several food partners that we get food from, and so we have to deliver to and distribute to places outside of just Starkville Strong. But of course, we deliver to our Neighbors Helping Neighbors event and our Path to Stability clients, but we do the Casterel Kitchen Jail, King Center, Boys and Girls Club, Community Counseling, and a couple of churches. And we're fixing to have to add more. And as of today, we've done forty-two thousand meals. That's forty-two thousand meals that was going in the garbage that we reassembled and distributed into food for the community, and that's a hundred and eleven thousand pounds plus of food rescued from going in the landfill. Neighbors Helping Neighbors is different. It's not a food giveaway, it's not a drive-through where you get a box. We designed it to be different, to be a community event where people show up to be seen, cared for, and supported by their community, by their neighbors. And so we have our basement set up like a grocery store. Our participants are given two sacks, and then they're able to go through the line and pick what they want. And the whole journey through, they have a volunteer with them who helps carry the sacks, engages them in conversation, and then helps them take their things to their car. A lot of volunteers leave this and say they're forever changed. I would invite you to come. It's the fourth Sunday of every month, except November, because we do a holiday one in December, but the fourth Sunday of every month at the back of Dunkington at one o'clock. And up to this date, we started in two thousand and twenty-three, we've reached four thousand three hundred and seventy-nine households through this program. And so we gather, I think this last month, we had eighty volunteers, and we had a hundred participants. Our seven free little pantries are around town. We built five additional ones. There were two here from the Boys and Girls Club and the Wesley Foundation. And so we worked with the community to build these and place them around town. We have part responsibility to fill them, and the community has part responsibility. This is about food access, twenty-four, seven, seven days a week, anyone can put anything in, and anyone can take anything out. And so this is a model that we're proud of. I think there's an eighth one that was built at the high school outside of us, but they asked us to fill it during intercession and holidays. If you Google Starkville Strong Pantries, this pops up, so you can easily go and find where they are. I get asked this question a lot, why is there so much need? And I don't think it's rocket science. Startable housing crisis, we have a lack of affordable, available, inhabitable housing. Living wage is staying the same, and the cost of living is going up. So what we're seeing is not just those below the poverty line struggling, we're seeing teachers and firefighters and different individuals that aren't used to struggling who are now coming to us for food. Homelessness. It looks different in rural areas, guys. It's not a tent city, it's not a bunch of people living in a box, it's couch surfing until kindness runs out, it's multiple families under one roof that's only meant for one. Of course, they're sleeping in cars, abandoned buildings, and things like that. But this is a hundred and forty-one cases, these are clients that are presenting as homeless and during their intake. So, property value increases, this is how we explain it when people ask, rent increases, investors buy property to rent, fewer rental properties take Section Eight now, and affordable, available habitable housing becomes scarce. Thirty-two percent increase in homeless cases in the last year, and twelve percent of our clients were homeless for over a year. And another word you can use is displaced, because they get in somewhere, the rent goes up, and they can't afford it, and then they're displaced again. That might help you put the two together. So, we have volunteer opportunities, of course, Neighbors Helping Neighbors, Second Servings, and then we have Friday volunteering at one, every Friday at Dunkington. And that's my presentation. I'd love to answer any questions if you have them.
The Path to Prosperity, you said it meets once a month?
Path to Stability, once a month.
Okay, I'm sorry, okay. Where is it?
No, once a week, sorry, on Fridays.
On Fridays, at Dunkington?
At the Discovery Center.
Oh, okay.
Discovery Center.
Okay.
I don't want you to say meet every, uh, four Sundays of the month.
Neighbors Helping Neighbors is the fourth Sunday of every month except November. We skipped that one to prepare for the holiday one on December fourteen. December fourteen.
What about, what location?
Behind Dunkington, in the public parking lot, across from the restor. You'll see the commotion going on. We have clients that line up five hours before the event, and they're afraid we'll run out too.
Brandy, you did, you did, you did this presentation at the Layman Group.
Somewhere, yes, I did on homelessness.
Yeah. We had the lady from Columbus last night.
Good, good, Susan.
They built, they built in, built in these miniature houses.
Tiny homes.
Tiny homes. They built in those.
Yeah, Susan and I, she, she shares a lot with me, how to navigate the journey, and has helped a lot with some of that.
Any other questions? Thank you so much for making that presentation.
Thank you for having me.
All right. Ms. Christiane Suggs is here with Gurus, and she has a presentation on a potential project at the Garrett Road, Highway Twelve bypass. So, Christiane?
Hi. I have been before some of y'all, and some of y'all I'm not certain that I have. I have some handouts here for everyone. I am in-house counsel at Gurus and Associates, and what does that mean? I'm a lawyer. I'm here on behalf of the developer who's retained our firm to help obtain assistance with building a road. The proposed project, y'all may have heard of it. The proposed project is a hotel and student housing development. Are we short on it?
No, that's okay.
Okay. Is it hotel, the student housing development to go off of Pat Station Road and Highway Twelve, over there by the Walmart and the bar, walk-ons? Is everybody familiar with the area? It used to be a detention area.
It was a city's log-in.
Owned by the city. Do you all mind if I sit?
No. Go ahead, go ahead. And just to remind, Christiane brought us the project over in front of Academy Sports.
Yes.
Well, I'm sorry, behind Academy Sports.
I also helped with the Garen redevelopment project, which the city participated in. It was a ground field as well as tax increment financing, and our firm helped with the cotton mill project, which is also tax increment financing. I realize I jumped in to talk about the project first. How familiar is everybody with tax increment financing in general? Some went, a little bit, not so much.
I think most of us are.
Okay.
Mike certainly is. William, you are, aren't you? Kyle, you are? Okay. I think everyone is.
I don't want to bore y'all with the, with the basics, but tax increment financing, I'm going to say this real quick, is a risk-shifting mechanism by which a developer can go in and build public infrastructure, and then only when they have built enough development to support bonds would bonds be issued. And the money for those bonds comes from the increase in taxes that result from the development of the project. Sometimes cities and counties put in all their ad valorem tax increase, sometimes they put in part of it, sometimes cities contribute part of their sales tax rebates, but only that money that is generated from the project and is an increase over what the city was receiving beforehand is eligible for use in TIP. That's the basic concept of tax increment financing. And what we're asking for here is a partnership between the city and the county to issue tax increment financing bonds based on the increase in the ad valorem taxes of this property out there off Pat Station Road, which, once a road has been built, and a hotel, and a four hundred and fifty, four hundred and four-bed student housing unit has been constructed as well. We are projecting that that's going to increase the tax basis of the project for the city from about sixteen hundred a year to around two hundred and thirty-nine thousand a year, just in ad valorem taxes. For the schools, it's going to increase the tax basis from three hundred and thirty-three thousand a year to over four hundred and sixty thousand a year. So, it's a substantial increase, because right now, it's unimproved property, there's nothing on it, it's got some wet areas, it needs a road, you can't do much with it.
Well, also, it is, it's not on a frontage road.
Yes, ma'am.
So, it doesn't have the visibility that you would see associated with something directly off of Twelve, directly off of One Eighty-Two, directly off of anything. It is tucked away. So, the area needs height that a hotel would bring, for example.
That's correct.
For have, for having that visibility that makes it available and makes it a usable piece of property.
Just take one if you need it. What I'm passing around now is a rendering of the proposed road, except for the fact that I believe we are not doing the cul-de-sac. I believe the city wants it to be a dead-end road instead of the cul-de-sac, so engineering is revising it. So, if you would, just bear with me and pretend that the cul-de-sac is actually not there, and it's a dead-end road. What we are asking for is assistance with the work to be done in the blue and the work to be done in the red. Now, tax increment financing, you can use it for a lot of different things, but we are only asking for assistance with the roadwork, for the improvements to Pat Station, which will be the primary entrance, as well as that brand-new road, which will service the hotel and the most of community housing, and eventually open up the area for additional development. I've just laid a bunch of information out for everybody. Are there any questions? Just bear with me if you have questions as we go along. So, back to the, yes, ma'am?
No, I was just going to say, I recently heard from the owner of Walk-Ons, who said that he was asking about this project, and was it still, was it still viable? Because he said, you know, that foot traffic would be very beneficial to the Walk-Ons restaurant, obviously.
It will, it will.
Just sharing that.
I'm sure everybody here is aware of the need for rooms in the city of Starkville. The hotel is right now scheduled to provide about a hundred hotel rooms. This is going to be a concept that's new to Mississippi, it's a home to suites, but it's going to provide larger suites for extended stays, which would be ideal for traveling business people, but also for families looking for somewhere to go over the weekend for game weekends. It's going to have larger suites, small kitchenettes, things like that, fold-out couches, and we feel like there's a real good, there's a solid market potential. Sales, once we reach stabilization, are expected to reach four million a year, and that's going to translate into, if you look down at, if you look at this spreadsheet here, the G and A at the top, you can see how we anticipate the sales taxes as well as the ad valorem taxes to increase. We have the two, two percent tourism tax based on the sales, eighty-four thousand a year to the city, the parks and rents tax, forty-two thousand a year, and then the city's share of the, the sales tax rebates would be fifty-four thousand a year from the hotel. So, four million in sales will be quite a noticeable, well, I don't know how much it impacts y'all's budget, but that is a substantial, fifty-four thousand in revenue would, would be a nice addition.
Any number that we can get.
Importantly, we are not asking for any part of sales taxes. The special taxes and school taxes are not part of this request also. What we're asking for is for the city and the county to each contribute twenty-three point nine mils and apply it to whatever the increased assessed value is. Yes, ma'am?
Should we think, should we think as we're planning about that as up to twenty-three point nine mils?
Yes.
And that, that number will actually be determined based on mileage at that particular point in time? And the key takeaway for me is that the city and the county are contributing equal amounts.
That's right. That's right. So, when we, when we write it into a TIP plan, that the request is, the first request in a TIP plan is for not to exceed amount of bonds. And what the TIP plan does is it says, here's the maximum amount of bonds that will be issued. So, we are asking for not to exceed three point three five oh million in TIP bonds. That's the most to be issued. That would help cover part of the road cost, closing cost, and a debt service reserve. Now, it's entirely possible that there may not be enough revenue to issue that amount. It's entirely possible that there may be enough revenue to issue five million. The three point three five oh is the maximum that we are asking for, and once it's approved in the TIP plan, we would have to come back, y'all would have to vote again, we would have to make an adjustment if we ever wanted to seek an increase. There is no intention to do that. That's the maximum amount to authorize.
And that's shared between us and the county?
Yes, ma'am. And the request is for the city and the county to equally share it by applying twenty-three point nine mils to the increased assessed value. Now, based on conversations with the Tax Assessor's Office, we anticipate that the total increased assessed value for the project will be around six point nine million dollars when it's completed. And this is important. If we don't build both the hotel and the student housing, there's not going to be enough revenue to issue the three million in bonds. So, y'all will have gotten a hotel and a road, and be, be looking at issuing a much smaller series of bonds to reimburse for whatever can be supported for the roads. It's going to take both of those to hit the tax rolls for the projected amount to issue this amount of bonds. So, it really shifts the risk to the developer. This developer wants this hotel, they want this student housing, and they have to have the road. They have to have access to the property. Do you have any questions?
This developer also, if I, if I may add, because we met with him, is an MSU person, and so he's very excited about coming back into town, and he's also interested in potentially another hotel after this one. And that was, that was a bit of a swaying factor for me, is that he is a developer of hotels, and he has more than one concept.
He has hotels across the state. We actually have, we, we have two developers here. The developer of the hotel is one particular LLC, I'm sorry, legal lease. There's a LLC developing hotel, and they develop hotels across the South and in Mississippi, and they're looking at adding an additional hotel, and they just haven't worked out getting it on the site plan, I haven't gotten it yet for you, Mayor. But they're looking at adding it south of where the current hotel site actually is on that map, the proposed site. A single-purpose entity is going to lay the road, you know, we do single-purpose entities to limit liability, and then another LLC is going to build the student housing development. It's a very exciting project. We feel like it's a good opportunity for the city, a good opportunity for the county, but we are at the point now where we can't go forward unless we have some assistance. And we have chipped away at the budget, and we are asking only for assistance with these road improvements, and that comes to about twenty-three point nine mils from each of the city and the county in the form of TIP bond.
And if, if the board remembers correctly, this is where the roundabout's going to go. So, this will be a really significant intersection in the not-too-distant future for us.
Excuse me. I'd like to say that I'm, I'm supportive of this idea, because it is fairly worthless to the city as it stands. I think we get about a thousand dollars a year in ad valorem taxes from that site right now. So, any, anything will, will of course be an improvement. But one of the things that you don't always anticipate is, when you do that road, how it impacts development down, on down the way. The Academy Road TIP, the Academy TIP essentially constructed the road that went around, connected Highway Twelve and Stark Road. Academy was built, the TIP functioned like it was supposed to, and because that road was there already, we now have that hotel project that's in the work, that's getting a bit of a boost from a Rita incentive, and, but we didn't have to do any additional infrastructure or road building. So, this, this just sets that area up for future development, and I'm assuming that it's dead-ending, because we hope sometime in the future that road will extend up.
Oh, yes, absolutely, sometime in the future it will, because as the other piece of property develops, it's going to, it's going to need to connect. So, yeah.
So, TIP is a way to create synergy in areas that developers are willing to take the risk on putting down the infrastructure and then dedicating it to the city, once the revenues are sufficient to have bonds to reimburse them for a part of the cost. I will say, this is an expensive piece of property to develop. There were mitigation credits, it's going to be an expensive bridge, the cost of concrete and asphalt are increasing, it's going to be an expensive road, but these developers want to make this project happen, and they really appreciate the city's consideration and supporting this. Yes, ma'am?
And one, one other thing that's come up in other conversations that you and I have had, there, there's always that idea that this will happen with or without city and county participation. Could you speak to that?
Yes. I have been staving the developers off from reallocating the resources to other projects. The LLC that is developing this student housing has projects from California to Connecticut, and they are ready to pull their resources from this project and start spending all their money and time on engineering and design on other projects. And the hotel developer has got other deadlines, and so if we can't come to some type of resolution, they're going to have to move on. And the developer purchased the land years ago, they had told me they are happy to leave it as is and stop funding and stop moving forward and, and plan to, because they have other things they can bring to fruition that are much less costly.
Well, and then this land is not costing them anything, because there are no taxes associated with it.
Right.
So, we're going from zero to sixty miles an hour in what we would get from this project. I mean, that's the salient point to me, you've got nothing, and you've got no prospect or something because of difficulty with property. So, I think that there's a real opportunity here for us, it's just a matter of whether or not we make the numbers work.
There, the development timeline, if incentives are improved by the city and the county, the hotel developer and the road are ready to start as ASAP, the hotel developer is ready to start in January, assuming everything proceeds through permanent as planned. Eighteen-month timeline is typical for hotels, so that'll tell you how quickly the hotel would be looking to open. They would really like to make this project a reality.
And the, the developer's going to go to the county on Monday? Is that accurate?
Yes, ma'am. So, the plan right now is to come in and not ask y'all to take action, talk about TIP, talk about the project, and see how y'all are feeling about things, and let you discuss it. I'm going to have, we're going to have similar conversations with the county on Monday. And if y'all are in favor of this, then I would like to come back and ask the board to consider us on the agenda in November. We would take two meetings with TIP. The first meeting is the intent, you pass a resolution saying we've gotten the TIP plan, and we're going to hold a public hearing. The second meeting, you have the public hearing, everybody can comment, we need to make adjustments to the TIP plan, we do that, and then if it's to the board's pleasure, they approve the TIP plan. And typically, a county will follow once the city has done, taken those actions. So, that's, that's the plan right now.
Any questions?
Mayor, just one observation. I would like to see what the county does, I think, I like to them commit first, you know, or make sure, and then a reason why we have to commit first instead of the county.
There's certainly no reason. I mean, if that's, if that's the board's pleasure, it's, it's six of one. I mean, if that's, if that's to board's pleasure, it's, it's six of one half a dozen other, because if one doesn't, doesn't do it, then the other one's not going to do it. So, it is of, it is of no matter to me one way or the other, because without the both, it's not going to happen.
Right. It's second and final, I like what the normal budget share had said about up to, up to, instead of the specific law. And as long as we get a real commitment there, I've seen a number of these TIF Milton Court throughout the terms I've been here, but if we can get a real commitment, make sure that road, once it's built, it has all the specification according to engineering standards. And what happened is they'll come in and build these roads, and then they'll come in, well, we've got flooding issues, we've got drainage problems, we don't, we don't have the county money. So, the point is that we make the commitment with the recommendation of a budget share. Certainly contingent on, as you said, Mayor, the county participating is mandatory, but you know, they will come in, we need, definitely, we don't need any risk with this. If we can, you know, you, you ensure that, I just want to say that front of my mind.
And so, I'm glad you brought that up. One of the things that we will ask, if the city agrees to go forward with the assistance and the county agrees, we will, with every TIF, there's a contract entered into between, typically, the city and the developer, and it's called the Development Agreement. And that's where you lay out things, like, for example, we want, I think with the Garen Union Factory, we had language in there regarding stormwater, and it needed to be built to a certain specification. And that's where we pack in those types of concerns, you know, if the city wants a certain type of street light, that's where it goes, that type of thing. But all the plans and specifications are approved through city permitting so that they are intended and should meet the city's specifications.
And those are, those are set, and our DRC committee takes care of all of that. So, yeah, absolutely. But I do think that the, the project has, adds value to it in the area that currently has minimal value. In fact, if anything, it's probably a detriment. So. Okay. Any other questions, thoughts? All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We will look forward to what you learn from the county and then for you to be on the agenda on November the fourth, potentially.
Excuse me. I appreciate y'all's time. The mayor knows how to contact me. I don't think I put my contact information there. I'm happy to talk with anyone if you have additional questions. Anytime. I love the sound of my own lips. I'm glad you could talk.
You're a lawyer. You're supposed to.
All right. Thank y'all. I appreciate it.
No dig it, you, Vice Mayor?
No.
All right. Well, let's move to our, let's move to our agenda then. Well, I think that was my copy. That's all right. I was looking over here over, yeah, over the Skinner's over there. All right. We have two sets of minutes. These are the final minutes that Ms. Harden put together, so we'll have a little memorial session here. But Burke has said that they're ready, I believe, so we consider those for consent?
Present.
Consent?
Okay with everyone?
Sir?
I said consent, okay with everyone?
Yeah, well, well, I'm not seeing it, hearing any dissenting, so we're going, we're going to let, let that one go. And Mr. Kemp, this, under the mayor's comments, I've got employee introductions, but then we're going to go with the energy workshop comments again. And for the, for the moment, I'll say them out loud here, since, since Tuesday, the 21st, is going to be the first one at 6:30 at the Griffin Chapel Methodist Church, which is right down the hill from, from City Hall. Wednesday, it'll be at the community center, the police department at 9:00 AM, and then at 12:30. And the 12:30 one gets you lunch. And then at 4:00, and then again at 5:30, there will be one at the Sportsplex Annex on Lynn Lane. And then, last but not least, on Thursday at 12:00, at the Discovery Center. I don't see lunch associated with that 12, 12:00 one. No? Couldn't find anybody to go for lunch on that one? Okay. So, anyway, those, those will be available for the energy, home energy workshops. And I'll, I'll make that announcement again on Tuesday night, so.
Mayor, and can you email a flyer to me? I've had several different groups reach out and send it there.
Yeah, I'll send it to everybody.
Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And we'll post it again on social, so. Okay. We have public appearances, and if you recall from the last board meeting, Mr. Sherden appeared before us as it regards our first public hearing on the predatory towing ordinance or non-consensual towing ordinance. And he has asked for 10 minutes associated with a, a public appearance. So, he met that requirement, and so he will be making a 10-minute presentation, which will be timed, as they all are. And then we will move to the public hearing, which is the second public hearing and potential consideration of the adoption of the non-consensual predatory towing ordinance. I think we have, in your package, you should have the most recent one. It's got highlights in yellow of the changes that were made due to the comments that were made and the sheet that he passed out. There were some salient points that he made, so we included them in there, and everyone can, you know, look at that and decide if you wish to do anything further on, on that. But it will be available for us to make that decision and listen to that public hearing. Also dropped a number of emails into your board package, so that e-package should have those in there that I have received, Alderman received, who else? Alderman Brooks, I believe, received some emails that have been included, so those should all be in the board package. Next, we have a public hearing, consideration of a rezoning request, which is Mr. Havilin, you want to just give a little brief primer on that one?
Yes, this is part of the Crossroads Foundation project that's going on. And what it is, a transfer of the ownership, which used to be the university, has transferred to the foundation, so the use has changed. It was a special educational, it only allows for educational uses. The rezoning will make it match, the zoning's around it, allow for development projects, and only fix use for the.
Okay. And there was no, it was unanimous, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then the SE 25-08?
Yep. This is regarding the foundation's hotel, Hotel Madalar. It's for three special exceptional requests. One is for the width of the building. The other is for the finish or transparency of the first floor. And then the other, last one, is for a pitch board to the building. And that was the end of the song.
All right. Great. Any questions you have on either one of those? Those will both be obviously public hearings. No? I thought maybe you might have questions. Lean forward. Okay. All right. So, under mayor's business, y'all, four years has passed by rather quickly, so we have to ask again for the state to extend our 2% food and beverage. So, let me get a little explanation for you on this one, because this is the 2% food and beverage and the 2% hotel motel lodging tax. Our hotel motel lodging tax used to be in perpetuity. It had no, it had no repealer, it had no sunset. Unfortunately, last year, we went to the legislature and requested that they change the definition of a hotel or, or the lodging to include something less than, I believe it was 10 rooms, down to four rooms. And so, in the doing of that, I did not anticipate that we would move forward with that if it, if it lost the in-perpetuity feature of it. But it went through, it's been passed, it is in existence, and so now we have to go forward and ask for the hotel tax to be renewed. And that's where we are. So, rather than do it this year or next year, 2026, for the food and beverage tax, and then go back again to the legislature in 2027 and ask for the hotel tax, I have talked to our legislator, Alderman?
Alderman.
Well, he used to be, didn't he?
Yes, he did.
He did. Representative Robertson, and he has said that it probably is a good idea to put the two of them together, and that way we only go forward once every four years and ask the legislature for this particular exception or this particular extension. So, I have put them together, and that's why this looks different, and that's why the resolution includes the 2% hotel and motel. And if you recall, that does not come to the city, it just passes right on through and goes straight to the visitors and convention council or the CVB, depending on how you want to think of it. So, yes, ma'am?
And you're also asking all those?
For 10 years.
That, that were granted.
Yeah. I've asked it every time when we've gone back to them. You know, that, we were at 10 years, they went down to three, they went back up to four. And so, every year, we ask for 10, and every year, they still, or most recently, the feeling in the, in the state, in the Jackson area is, or at the legislature, is that we can only have four. So, I'm asking for 10, but probably going to get four.
And we're basing that ask for 10 on the fact that there's debt associated with this particular?
With the 2% food and beverage, yes, but not with, the hotel has no debt associated with it, but it's locked together, language-wise, it's locked together. So, anyway, could we get consent for that after all that discussion? Then we would.
Consent.
All right. And then, all right, this is the resolution to opt out of the Safe Solicitation Act. So, if y'all recall, we passed our aggressive panhandling ordinance in 20, I think it's February 2024. I put it on the cover sheet. And I believe it covers everything we need. There's only one element that we may revisit at some point, but this, this keeps us from having to put together a permit, requiring, you don't, you don't have to do a fee, but you can't do a fee in excess of $25. But I think the, the, our, our ordinance covers everything we need, and we have to opt out by the end of the year. So, this is what that is. So, I think this is probably in our better interest to go ahead and opt out of this, and that allows our ordinance to control. So, any questions or discussion or thought on that? No? Okay. Consent for that?
Let's hold that up.
Okay. Is there something in particular you want to look into that I could?
Yeah. And then just.
Okay. Well, I put the ordinance, our ordinance, in there as well as the Safe Solicitation Act should be in there too. Okay. All right. There is no board business. We have an airport business, which is the acceptance of the grant funds for, from MDOT for the development of the airport. So, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. This is the request, okay. I've got to leave. So, y'all excuse me. I have to recuse myself, I have from a work session as well as from the board meeting on this next particular item. So, if you will excuse me, Vice Mayor, I will defer to you. Mr. Havilin, would you provide some information to these folks, and somebody can begin when we're done?
Yes, this is a reconfiguration of five lots into five lots for the transfer of ownership. It was, like, review is honor subdivision, everybody.
Any question in the board? Alderman, you have any suggestion, your consent person down there, what you want to put on consent? I think consent.
All right.
No questions from Mr. Havilin. We'll get to Mayor back in.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome, Mayor. Thank you. The same thing as Tuesday night. Thank you.
Does this mean you have to recuse yourself from the consent agenda Tuesday morning? Or is this technical that?
Well, since I don't vote, I wouldn't think so.
Well, probably if it's a consent agenda item, you'll be conducting.
Well, y'all didn't put it on consent, right? So.
Well, I mean, it has not been indicated. I would, I don't know.
So, I would say, don't put it on consent, and then it doesn't come issue.
That's right. I would say that, yeah.
Is that all right? Okay. All right. Okay. So, the next item is discussion, consideration of the final plan approval of Gabadon Estates?
Yes, this is a large lot with a single paneling, and they're separating it to two lots, so they can add it up a single panel.
Okay. All right. Any, is no issues with that? Okay. Consent for that one? Okay. And then under engineering, we have, and this one needs some, a little bit of time. Mr. Williams here, I'm going to let you give a little background on this, since it is such a large amount. I think it's appropriate for the board to hear the whys.
It is. So, what this is for is the communication duct banks, the boxes, the full boxes, if y'all have been watching some of the projects that deal and go in. So, these are the boxes that go in to where you have a duct that runs, and this is where the splices work. Originally, this project, it was designed, these are tied in with Max Out, so the communication line is running along the transmission on the door side. This is where these lines went up. And originally, it was designed for, whenever we started the project, we bid it, we started working on it, we call up Max Out, saying, hey, we're going to be a year and a half out, a year, you need to come do it. They started going through the plans, and they said, these boxes aren't physically big enough to put our equipment into. They included, so Max Out was involved in the design portion of it. The guy that did that's retired about four years ago. The new guy said it would have never worked, or whichever way, physically would not work. We knew this was coming, whenever we put in for the raise grants, we included those funding in there, so it's inside the budget, but it wasn't inside the contract amount. So, this is to approve the prices. It's a supplemental agreement, and so it has to go through MDOT, and so it's gone through about six months of dating on the prices and going back and forth with MDOT to see that we're praying reasonable prices compared to other things. So, it's gone through our engineers, and it's gone through MDOT engineers, and now it's getting to the board level on it. The other thing that it adds is whenever the project was originally designed, it was still MDOT right-of-way. Since we took it over, we added communication conduits to it, to where now, these are the conduits as well in this change order that makes it to where we'll be able to put fiber to all of our lights. It doesn't have the fiber in them because we don't know how, you know, project budget is going on that one, but right now, it's the conduits are there. So, it sets us up to where if we have money in the project, or if we decide to do it as another project, this will make it to where there's no more underground work that has to be done, and then we're just pulling the fiber optic itself to it. So, it sets us up for a long-term traffic management system and those type things. And we're doing the same thing along Main Street. So, right now, we have a four-inch duct bank that's completely Irish, and this will have a four-inch duct bank on 182, and then Utilities has an optical ground wire that's at the very top of the transmission poles that will be able to drop in, tie into Utilities, and then hopefully take it up Utilities, up Lafayette one day to tie it in. So, this is part of the overall fiber optic planning for the whole citywide.
That's great. And I want to say, you know, I'm always in awe of the engineering field, and I'm particularly pleased with, with the engineering futuristic planning setting us up for the next 20, 30 years so that we'll be able to do that. Between that and, and Mr. Havilin with, with the city planners position, that it just makes us a cohesive effort as we're doing Main Street and 182. So, you know, kudos to all of y'all for, for what you do to keep us well ahead of the game. So, thank you for that.
You did say, there's no new money. This money was already in the budget, right?
It's money inside the project budget, but it wasn't in Burns' contract. So, whenever we bid it with Burns, we didn't have this in here. So, this is pretty much, it's in the overall project budget that we have. So, we have the grant funds for it, but we have to be able to. So, these are doing all line items with Burns, like, hey, whenever you put a four-by-seven-foot box in the ground, this is how much I pay you for that four-by-seven box.
Okay. I got you.
So, that's, so it was inside the contingency that we did. We knew it was coming, so we put it into that raise grant contingency to have it on that one.
I'm sorry. And I was going to say, and that, that is the benefit of having Mr. Williams on top of that project, because when we first did the project, that wasn't factored into it, but some between, sometime between that and the raise grant, that was noted, and so we made that, made that claim. So, Kim?
Touching on the Alderman bond, because I was going to ask that question. So, we made several change orders on that project. Mark, would you let me, is it still in?
Right now, the, we've used more dirt than we planned on because of some of the quality of the dirt being in the low spots right now. And also, we had to hit some of the stone chalk layers, so the, the cotton blue clay or the hard stuff, you're not able to put that back around your pipes, so we had to replace it. So that's over what we got, but now that we're coming up the hill, hopefully we get new material, it kinda levels out, type thing. So right now, we're fine contingency-wise, but you know, if we go dig up something we, nobody knows about, type idea, but we're, we're toe to contingency, and we're, we're fine right now, but we're 40, we're 37% done with the project, so.
Oh, that's a good percentage to know. I did not know that.
We're 37% done, and we're 42% timed, but what happens with that? So, so we'll be paving at the end of October, and so whenever you go to pave, then that's a big chalk that hits. So, so technically, right now, we're 4% behind, but then like the electrical, the electrical hit in the January and March, and those will be big line items that hit at once. So kinda what'll happen is, it'll look like we're a little bit behind, and then all of a sudden, they'll hop, and they'll hop. So we're about where we need to be.
It continues to be a very exciting and complicated project, so y'all are, y'all are working hard. We appreciate it.
Consent.
Consent for that one? Okay. All right. A low quote in amount of 23, 622 for plantings. And so the next couple of these are both plantings to replace some of what we've lost on Highway 12 based on drought and irrigation breakdown and that kind of thing. Anything other than that, Mr. Williams?
That's the main thing. So the one thing I would say on here is, we're actually gonna do this with in-house crews, so this is gonna be probably all between three departments. So streets, we're actually gonna have the street department helping traffic safety with it being in the middle of Highway 12. We've got it scheduled to happen in the middle of December, so that way the kids will be out of school, hopefully our traffic will be down, so that way it's safer as well. So this saves us probably about $50,000 comparative on that one, and then it also is trying to get our crews up as far as that, so we're trying to look after our dollars, start working on our land some more. So substantial savings with using in-house crews.
I think that's great.
And it's more than Highway 12, isn't it? There's some other spots?
It is. You've got, on that, the Hammerhead, it's on, on banky road, we'll put a few trees there because people kinda drive through and use it as a driveway instead of what it's supposed to be for.
Well, now, you know that unless we, unless we put some stout trees there, they're gonna still continue to do that, so we're gonna have to figure out maybe bollards in the, in the.
These are three-inch trees, two-and-a-half inch caliber, so they'll be 12 foot by, so these, these aren't saplings, it's a different size.
Okay. We'll see what happens.
Well.
I may have to bet on that one. We're gonna have to take some odds on that.
More concrete bulldog.
You mean exactly.
Yeah, I know where to get one of them.
So that tree is, I think, you have to look and see, but I think we're $150, $180 a tree, on if we go with the contractor, they told us about probably $1,000, $800 to $1,000. So if we do, we'll still be able to replace it and be under what we do.
Well, it's more of a, what people will do. All right. So consent for that. And then the second one is also, consent for that one, is this tree, so, thank you. All right. And then change orders on the Falcon contracting for the pavement. Cody?
Yes, ma'am. That's, it's for Falcon, J.C. Chief, Anthony Wallace, three different contracts, but this is our term bid for effectively what it takes us to do our pavement program.
Okay. All right. And for the upcoming pavement program, right?
We anticipate, hopefully have a list for the board to come up with.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And then we've got fiscal year budget amendments. Mr. Corbin, would you just give us a little brief overview of that one?
Sure. Mostly, we were, we've got a couple increases. Police department was a big increase, just over just there. We had to pay for two audits in the current year. We were fortunate to catch up and able to pay for two audits, so we had to pay a budget for that. And then utilities, the street lighting change that happened, we ran over with our street light bills and had to do a bump for that. We are able to cover all of these through revenues and other departments being under budget, and we are to the good for the year, so there's nothing coming out of any fund balance or anything. We're, we're good.
Yes, sir.
Mayor, very briefly, am I correct that he said that this budget adjustments also contain some adjustments of some salaries that were approved by the board that may not have sufficient? I know that, I'm not for sure, this budget amendment may be into the next, next year, where there's some salaries that were approved that there may not have been enough money associated with it. That's, that's not coming up now, is it?
I don't know. Is it? I don't think so.
Not other than that, in police, we did not budget 100%. We, we budgeted for some vacancies in police that did not come through for a week or so.
Adjust for police?
Yes.
But if any comes, now, actually, of course, Mayor.
Certainly.
Mr. Corbin, if any come up in the next fiscal year, but to cover any salaries, we'd be sure you let us know.
Sure.
Because I'm thinking, I know, I may be wrong, but it may be something coming up because there are a lot more people, in my opinion, that were included in their final outlay. You know, when we approved it, we were told certain ones gonna get it, but when the list hit, you know, it was more involved. So maybe in the future, it'd be good, we, we were told exactly what, who's gonna get those salaries in the future, a little bit more details.
Okay. And I thought we did have a position report to show who was getting what.
We, we just needed to know. We're good. We're good.
Okay. All right.
Can I, can I point out that, as Mr. Corbin was saying, we're fortunate that we were able to cover that with revenues that we had not budgeted and, and other departments that were under, under budget. The, the big reason we're able to cover that is that anomaly that was silent, our sales tax back in the summer, when it appears that we got a settlement, if you will, from Department of Revenue related to the triangle crossing.
One-time deal.
So it was one-time money, and not, we're not anticipating seeing that again. We'd love to see it, but we don't think we'll see that again.
Okay. All right. Consent for those?
Consent.
All right. And then financial statements, consent for that? Okay. All right. Then under the fire department, we have a low quote for the metal building that's been kinda laying around for several years to cover the equipment out at Fire Station 5. So we've saved a, a bit of money on the construction of that by, instead of having a concrete floor, that was the way the budget was drafted for this upcoming year. So, but it is in the budget to do that, and it still leaves the chief with some maintenance money or some building money. So consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And then the repair some broken concrete in front of Fire Station 1. Is that the park side or the backside?
The park side.
Is the park side? Okay. All right. Consent for that one?
Consent.
HR, any of these, we had one that was a new position, right?
It was number three, we have a sudden departure, it was a water treatment, and there was a three-hour tire even for the kind of activity.
Okay. I'm sorry. Say that again? Slower?
No, I'm sorry. Number three. They, yeah, sudden departure without water treatment.
Right. Mr. Williams. Okay. Yes. So we have a temporary coming in for utilities.
Consent.
Okay. Consent for those?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. That'd be 137. And then we have parks, a low quote for, for MacCor, these are, these are the picnic tables that are gonna go into the Key Park pavilions. So we have gotten, we've whittled it down from, what, 40-something down to 22, is it?
It's 16. So it's what someone lose.
No, no, no. No, no, I meant the price wise.
Okay, I thought you meant number of.
No.
22. Actually, the other original ones we looked at were $157,000.
Oh, okay. Well, that was why I fainted when you told me about it.
No, that was about 28, I think, as well as something else. It was gracious, so we've, we've gone through several iterations to try to get it down to something.
Yeah. But we need some, obviously, under those pavilions, so consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And then the change order for the, this is, well, no, this is the, the bowlers on top of the natural play area have shifted and need more grout, right? Was there anything else associated with that?
That's a, so it's grouting of the nature play bowlers.
Yeah. Apparently, they have shifted some, and there's some opportunity to catch your leg or some other body part in there, so.
Safety issues.
Safety issues, yes. Consent for that one?
Consent.
And then the installation of the water fountain at McKee Football Course. Consent for that one?
Consent.
Under police, we have, yeah, the Stratocast to all of this other stuff. I don't even wanna try to say it. I'll read it at the, at the meeting, but.
Yes, ma'am. This is the video, man. Man, it still works.
Thank you very much. Consent for that one? And then under code enforcement, we have, we're getting to the point where we don't have grass growing, but we do have several places that are gonna be in need of being noted as 211911 sub two. Consent for that one?
Consent.
All right. And then under the utilities, we have the proverbial source of supply, inevitable and frequent. I know, I know. Consent for that one?
Consent.
Low quote for the variable frequency drives for Trim Kane Pump Station. Anything about that you want to share with us, Mr. Kemp?
The, the current ones are inoperable and restricted use of law.
Okay. All right. Consent for that one?
Consent.
And then declaration of surplus items, consent for that one?
Consent.
Okay. And then we have a new contract with Cassidy Company, have we, or, I'm sorry, a new contract, rescinding the contract with Cassidy and approving the contract with Hazen and Sawyer. Apparently, these two gentlemen, I'm presuming men.
One male, one female.
Oh, good. Shame on me.
We're currently negotiating that contract.
Okay. All right. Anyway, they were with Cassidy, they have pulled out, and it is agreeable to Cassidy that we move to the new, the folks who were originally part of the design.
Transiting amount.
Yeah. Well, that's the negotiation. It should be.
We're negotiating it.
Yes. So allow us to negotiate for what was the same amount, which is less than 169,300. So consent for that one with that negotiation. And in fact, let's, in an amount to be negotiated, instead of, instead of it reading that way. Jonah, would you please put it that way?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And then authorization to advertise for bids for the headworks and clarifier, and that's a wonderful thing, guys, so consent for that one?
Consent.
All right. And that takes us to the end of the agenda.
One question.
Yes, sir.
You, Chris, when we gonna put a bathroom at Patriot Park?
Bathroom when?
Patriot Park.
That was.
Bathroom.
Bathroom at Patriots Park. We have looked at it, and we, we ended up not doing anything about it because we didn't have the funding, but it's on the list of.
We do, so we have a design for it.
Yeah.
We actually have a design, how, how you pull in right now, you have two driveways for it. What our actual design was, to get rid of that central driveway, move the parking over to the east side, and that way you'd have grass there, where folks don't just pull all the way up in there, and then have your bathrooms located between the pavilion and the north side or, the north side of your parking. So we have it designed and laid out as a matter of fact.
It's fun.
The bathroom, your JOP, football bathroom, was $127,000 is what it ran, and it'd probably be about the same, because the utilities are about the same distance apart. So I would say, probably budget about $150,000 for it, if that's something related.
It's of course now economy.
I also talked to him this week, too, about getting lights underneath that pavilion for him, to maybe do away with some of them.
The graffiti should be painted over by now.
Well, I have that.
Well, that's, that's on us to, to watch it closely and make sure that doesn't happen, because graffiti goes away as far as I'm concerned, as soon as it hits a surface, it's gone.
Parks, Parks, uh, Washington, I was out there. I think they already got.
Yeah. I think they did, because they made significant repairs to that pavilion.
It was.
Yes.
But we do, the pavilion does need some volume in, there's some things we need that here on it, so depending on the funding, we need to.
Yeah. And there's stuff that doesn't cost much that we're, that we're doing out there, so. All right. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
All right. Have a great weekend.